Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Somewhere in the building.
He's in behind that door.
We have a quorum?
You have a quorum.
There he is. Want to call the roll for Joe again?
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Present.
We have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tom, if you'd give the invocation. Please bear your heads for the invocation.
Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for this nation. And thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to vote, to cast our ballots, to make our decisions, to elect those that will govern us. Be with us this evening. And may the decisions that we make be those that you direct us to do. We thank you for all the blessings that we have. We pray this in your name. Amen.
All right. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opening remarks? I don't have any opening remarks, other than, I guess the polls are closed. Anything else?
I have a little announcement.
Okay.
This weekend at Marist is the annual Holiday Traditions. It's one of the great artisan and craft shows in the area. It's at the Marist Campus from nine till four. I always get a lot of good Christmas shopping there. If you like jewelry and art, artwork. It's also a great place to eat homemade baked goods and other things like that. It's a fundraiser for the Parents' Club there. So be sure and drop in if you can on Saturday. Oh, the other thing I was going to say, too, we had a great ribbon cutting this last Saturday at Blackburn Park for what is the Little Free Library was installed. It's the seventh one. Is Kim here? It's, this is a project of the Cross Keys Foundation. It's, if you've never seen it before, this is a free lending library that we've been installing in our parks. It's loaded with free books, and it's in the parks, usually near the playgrounds. And any child can come in and borrow a book, take it home, read it there. It's free. And it's just a great, it's just a great way to make books available. And this six-year-old little boy and his grandfather built this one. And it's just, it's just a great project. And thank you, Kim, for all your work on that.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for all your work that you do with schools and with Brookhaven. You do great things. I want you to stand up, so somebody can say hi to you. It's Kim Gerchey. He does a lot of work with Cross Keys. And he's extremely dedicated to improving the education, constantly improving the education of our children in Brookhaven. So thank you, Kim. All right. Anybody else have any opening remarks?
And just a reminder, next weekend is the 60th anniversary birthday party of Murphy-Kandler Park. Murphy-Kandler is 60 years old. They're going to be celebrating with a 5K family run, Duck Duck Goose, which I thought is just a great name for a run around the lake over there. And be sure and go on the murphykandlerconservancy.org website if you want to sign up for a great, easy race around the park. It's beautiful. Enjoy the lake and the trails and bring the whole family.
Yeah, I'll be starting that race. And I will also be doing the 1K toddler trot with my five-year-old. So be out there. All right. Okay. Agenda announcements? Do we have any agenda announcements?
No.
Okay. Public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Richard Wellmaker.
Come on down, Mr. Wellmaker.
Hi. My name's Richard Wellmaker. I'm a retired bail bondsman, and I have lived in what is now Brookhaven since 1963. I grew up here, went to Cross Keys High School. I also, at one time, worked for the Pink Pony as a floor manager. So I want to let you know that before I start saying how I support them. I've played in their golf tournaments since then. I mean, I haven't worked there since '94. But, so I played in their charity golf tournaments. We do the Pink Pony's Toys for Tots every Christmas. I've never had a problem with any, any problem with the Pink Pony. So I just want to state that as a taxpaying citizen of Brookhaven, that I think that we should leave the Pony alone, leave it as it is, and we'll all get along fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellmaker. Next.
Folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask you. We have rules on, they're posted on the back wall there. We would appreciate it if you'd refrain from any applause or calling out during these proceedings. We have to maintain a decorum. I understand if you agree with something, that's nodding heads is one way we can, when you can express that. We just can't have any applause or things like that. I appreciate it.
William Dunn.
Hello. I'm a Brookhaven resident, too. I live in District Four. And I'm here to say my, speak about my support of the Pink Pony. This is what I have to say. During my life, I've been told to beware of government intervention. I never felt like this was a problem until now. I feel like I'm experiencing the most direct government intervention in my life. I moved into what is now Brookhaven in 1988. And one of the reasons was that it was unincorporated to DeKalb County. I liked living in Atlanta while not having to worry about dealing with the city of Atlanta and never had any complaints about getting services from DeKalb County. I started going to the Pony not long after it opened in the early 90s and have been a regular day shift customer since. I'm friends with several of the longtime employees of the Pony and are friends on Facebook. I see pictures of their kids and grandkids, spouses, spouses, and the normal complaints and celebrations of everyday life. This may not be what you consider a mainstream, but this is the way I live my life, and I feel free to live it here in DeKalb County. When the city of Brookhaven began to be talked about, I didn't think it would apply to me down near the intersection of Northwood Hills and Beaufort Highway. I thought Brookhaven is north of Peachtree Road. But I found I would be in this city. I didn't want to think about, I didn't think I would want to be, and I voted against it, along with the majority of District Four voters who voted in the election of July 2012. Unfortunately for me, more people voted for it in District One and canceled out our votes in District Four. I talked to a few longtime business owners on Beaufort Highway, like at Rusty Nail and A to Z Auto, how they felt about being pulled into the new city. They both assured me they weren't in the new Brookhaven because no one had talked to them. But of course, they were. And so imagine my surprise when the first thing the City Council does is start working to close down my local bar. I feel like you drew a line around me and my bar to pull me into your city and then want to close it down. And that's why I feel this is the most direct government intervention I've ever experienced personally in my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
John Park.
Mayor Davis, councilpeople. Thank you very much for having me today. Thank you for the call today. I would like to respectfully ask that you delay this until after the election, until District Two has representation. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments?
All right. Thank you. Ends this public comment section. Consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have two items on the consent agenda. The first one is the minutes for the special call meeting of October the 21st, and then a resolution to set the calendar for the City Council for 2015.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda, items one and two.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda? Is anybody still by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's adopted. Announcements?
None.
All right. Reports and presentations?
Yes, we have a presentation regarding a program called Comcast Internet Essentials Program. Councilman Gebbia and also Mr. Gerchey will present on this, beginning with Mr. Gebbia.
We have some very, very good news. There is a program that is being sponsored by Comcast. And it is, it is called Internet Essentials. And it is a program designed to aid those children who do not, who are not able to connect to the internet. And as you well know, we've gone digital in our world. So anybody that doesn't have the opportunity to do that is at a real disadvantage. I'm going to ask Kim Gerchey, please to come up. He's president of the Cross Keys Foundation. And I'll just make this comment. Some of the, some of the details of this program is that instead of around the $50 price, students who are on the National School Lunch Program will be able to obtain this service for $9.95 a month. And there are three parts that go with that. There's no price increase, there's no activation fee, and there's no equipment rental fees. So this is a real opportunity to take underprivileged children and allow them to take a step up in the educational process. So one of the most often asked questions we had as councilmembers when we ran for office was not the Pink Pony. It was, what can you do about assisting in the educational system? And our answer was always the same. It's at DeKalb County. There's very little that we can do. Well, we found out that there were things that we can do. Some of the things that we've done is we've taken money that was, we could help direct. And we did things like correct the sidewalk and roadway systems along the Cross Keys, Woodward Elementary School on Curtis. If none of you have been down that road lately, it's worthwhile going down to see the dramatic improvements with signage and flashing lights, protective sidewalks, new crossing, road commerce. We can do things as a city that improve the city that'll also work to bring about safety for the kids because about 60 to 70% of those students every day walk to and from the school. So they didn't have some of the basic requirements that they needed for real security on that. The other thing that we've done as a city is we've moved towards becoming the first city-sponsored state charter school called Brookhaven Innovation Academy. And we're looking for approval on that. In 2015, we're going to open the doors hopefully in 2016. We'll be the first city in the state to do this. So we're getting creative in what we can do as a city to help impact the educational process here. And this is one more step in what Comcast brings. Kim, I'll throw it to you to kind of talk about the students at Cross Keys and why this is so important to them.
Thank you, Councilman Gebbia. City Council, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to address this point in that context. And just to prove it's not a complete mutual admiration society, you stole some of my thunder. I wanted to comment on those very things. It's actually very interesting tonight to have this announcement and support from the city for this program by a private sector enterprise. This does provide opportunity. The trouble with opportunity is it has to be taken, and it has to be promoted. So I'm going to make a little editorial statement about that in the context of the city of Brookhaven. One of the gentlemen that spoke earlier talked about being in District Four and suddenly finding himself in the city of Brookhaven. I share that same fate wherever you went. And I would say this about that. The things Mr. Gebbia just listed were things that I knew needed to happen, that I talked to DeKalb County about, not that they're a bad government, government body. But things are happening now that weren't happening before. Some of them, I'll agree with, some I won't. I'm not going to air all those things here. I've spoken to each one of you personally. You're all to be commended for your service to the city and the community. And Joe can testify. We have very, very strident conversations that we don't always agree on what those positions are. But what I wanted to do is to commend you for supporting this in your announcement because there is an enormous need. The brand of Brookhaven, when you raise the question of Brookhaven outside of Brookhaven, is one of wealth, of prestige, and so forth. But those of us that have lived here for decades, like my neighbor and myself, know that it's a much more diverse place. There's working poor, and there's poverty in our community. So it's commendable to this body and to this city that you've taken the time to make improvements on Curtis Drive. And this is not, this is a crazy coincidence. Literally this morning, I commented to my own son, "Look, the lights are flashing." We've stared at them not flashing for years. So thank you for that. There are over 500 walkers at Woodward Elementary here in Brookhaven. So these things are material. These things are actionable, and so they're commendable. And I appreciate that and commend the city for that. Today's an election day, so I also commend John Park and his opponent up until today, and neighbor before and after today, Tim Nama. So one of them will be up here with you in the very near future. So I commend both of them for standing up and serving. What I've seen is a big change, not just about a focus on education, but on things happening. I was commenting to our good friend, Mr. Mayor over here, Ronnie Mayor, that until the city, it was just he and I and a few old cronies at meetings with DeKalb, asking and begging for things that were hard to get sometimes. So I just wanted to make that editorial statement. We are in a time of change. We're still an early city. So I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the fact that actions speak louder than words. And there's a lot of rhetoric, as there should be in a community debate, but actions speak louder than words. So here's an actionable item, right? We're going to promote this at the foundation. We're aware of it. We're going to get behind it. What we've needed is a voice from someone like the city to say this is important and that there are people in our community that need this kind of service. So what I'm here to do is to pledge the first computer for the first family that Comcast retains under this. We're going to make sure they get a computer. Because frankly, this $150 is more than many of these families can afford.
Right.
But we're going to work on that. I'll pledge to deliver that first computer personally. And I would invite you guys to join me. I know that you and your city manager would love to do that. Let's do that. Let's make that a celebration because we are making a difference.
Yes.
Lastly, I will leave here tonight with a pledge that may not be able to be delivered, but we're going to, we're going to make the effort. There's no reason why we can't go and find grant money to support this $150. There's no reason why we can't challenge the Brookhaven community to sponsor some of these machines. So I will take that up. We have a voice, we have an organization, and we have a communication mechanism. We'll use it as loudly and as long as we can to make sure that all these citizens that are targeted by Comcast for this service have the opportunity to say yes, instead of not know about it or say no because they don't have $150. So I commend you all for this and for your service to date. And I look forward to seeing more contention and more rhetoric, and then ultimately, action that benefits all the residents of Brookhaven. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kim.
Appreciate your efforts.
Next?
Next is old business. The first item is the Apple Valley Traffic Calming. We have a public hearing on that, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Meehan is going to present. So if you'll open up the public hearing.
The public hearing is open.
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
Okay, this is for the Apple Valley Traffic Calming. This is the area of Apple Valley, really north of Dresden Drive, mainly between Sunland Drive and Oaklawn Ave. And this is something where the residents, according to our ordinances on our traffic calming, the residents can petition the city for installing traffic calming. They did the initial petition, which requires 20% signatures. We did the traffic study, showed that the speeds were high enough on Apple Valley that it warranted some traffic calming measures. And presented a plan and worked with the neighborhood in developing the plan that's shown for adding some speed humps on, three speed humps specifically on Apple Valley Road. That was, again, taken back to the residents, and they're required to have a 65% approval in order to bring it to council. They had, of the 18 properties affected, they had 12, signatures from 12 properties, which is 66% approving it. So we're presenting it tonight in front of council for final approval.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item of traffic calming on Apple Valley Road?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Stacy Finn.
Stacy Finn? Yeah, did you fill out a comment card, sir? Okay, we can just come see the clerk while she's talking.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you doing?
Good. My name is Stacy Finn. I've lived on Apple Valley for 17 years and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today. There's been a lot of change in our neighborhood, obviously in the area. They recently put speed humps through DeKalb County on Caldwell, which has resulted in all of the traffic trying to avoid the speed humps being pushed onto our street. We have 700 post apartments that are adjacent to us that are also cutting through. So it's, it's an issue of volume for us, but the speeds. When, when I connected with Richard and had the actual traffic study conducted, the speeds are excessive. I've got a lot of my neighbors here that are also, I'm going to be speaking tonight. We do have a hearing impaired child on the road. The street is narrow. We recently had a hit and run. And the police officer that came out investigated said, "You have got to pull yourselves together and do something about the traffic on the street. It's a nightmare." We explained to him that we were already working with Richard to petition. So just, you know, really asking for your support tonight. It's, it's been a long time coming, and it's definitely something that's needed on the road.
Thank you, Ms. Finn. Next?
Tom Dang.
Dane or Dang? Okay, Dane.
D-A-N-G.
Evening. I've, I've been a resident on Apple Valley for the past four years and grown to love the area. And like Ms. Finn said, that the streets are narrow. There are some hills that prevent, prevent people, drivers from seeing what's over the hill. So there could be some danger for pedestrians who are walking, as well as the limited amount of sidewalks that are on the street as well. And so from what I've seen, people are using it as an accessible route to cut through from, from Caldwell. And that's partially due to railroad tracks as well. But I just want to support, show my support for some kind of traffic calming measures on the street, which I live.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dang. All right, next?
Kim Majenovic.
All right, Ms. Majenovic, is that right? Miadovich.
Miadovich.
Miadovich. Hi, I'm a, I've been on Apple Valley since 2007. And I'm the parent with the hearing impaired child. And it is very, very alarming. I've seen it, you know, evolve where it is a very narrow street. There's no sidewalks at all on there. And I live at the very top of the hill where the flashing light is. And thank goodness, the flashing light's now working again. But for a year or so, it stopped working. People were hitting the signs, knocking down the stop signs and everything. But the traffic on there has gotten very heavy, and people are cutting through there because Caldwell's now has the speed humps. I mean, we had a lot of the post apartment people cut through. And they fly up that hill. It's not normal. It's not slow. And they even have the gall to even honk at the residents who are trying to back out of their driveway. You know, like, we're impeding them. So I really am asking for your support to do something with that, the street. Because now there's a lot more other, you know, new homes are going up, too. So it's just going to cause a lot of problems with all the cut through.
Thank you, Ms. Moretovich.
Miadovich.
Miadovich. I was about to say Marinovich? No, Miad, yeah. Like Mazda Miadovich. All right, got you. All right. All right, next?
Gillian Donan.
Donan?
Onan.
Onan?
Yes. I'm a resident of Apple Valley. I've also been there since 2007. I'm an attorney who had my practice in the neighborhood. I'm no longer in the neighborhood. But I have three young children. They are almost five, three, and 20 months. Every single morning, when I'm pulling out of my driveway, people, I'm on the top of the hill also. People are flying up the hill past my driveway. They deign to actually honk at me as I'm backing out or pull, or going forward out of my driveway. They flip me off with my kids in the car. And, I mean, it's really crazy. They've, they hit and run cars in the neighborhood. I mean, my kids tell me every morning, "Be careful pulling out of the driveway." Because, I mean, people are just flying down there, cutting through, coming from East Osborne and using our street at extreme excessive speeds. And it really is a hazard and a real, and a real issue. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Adam Scott.
All right, Mr. Scott.
Hey, to Adam Scott. I'm actually a resident on Oaklawn, so-
Right.
Very much affected by this. I'm a huge proponent of the traffic calming devices. Unfortunately, when they added them onto Caldwell, they decided to add them all on the Dresden side of Oaklawn, which, in my opinion, was a mistake. So what this did was route, as everybody's saying, to Apple Valley and then to cut through the Osborne Ave- sorry, through Oaklawn and up because they can avoid about three speed humps. So I think this is fantastic. However, I would request that you move that request that you move that one northernmost at the top to below Oaklawn because that will be a further deterrent for people to use that as a cut through. By putting it up there, you're really only making them go over two or three to make this cut through.
All right, we'll have Richard address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next?
The next one is for opposition.
Okay.
Tom Spencer.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. I'd like to clarify, I'm not in opposition to traffic calming devices being installed. However, they're proposed to be, that one of them would be installed adjacent to my property. And I would request that consideration be given for locating the traffic calming device south of the property line of my property. Just because I do not know at what point in time the property will be developed. But it would be very difficult to predict where the curb cuts are going to be. And it would be helpful if it was just slightly farther south.
What was your address?
Three properties, 1279 Sunland Drive is immediately adjacent to Apple Valley Road. It's at the corner of Apple Valley and Sunland. We were not in the property that was consulted in terms of trying to get signatures because we front on Sunland. But actually, the longest border of the property is on Apple Valley.
Gotcha. You're that first lot there, bottom left?
I beg your pardon?
You're the first lot there on the bottom left on Sunland?
Yes, and the next two.
Okay.
Right opposite 2600.
Okay, those three lots opposite 2600, okay.
And it would just be helpful if that first speed hump were placed just below the property line so that we wouldn't have to worry about, oh, gosh, where will the curb cuts be when and if our property is developed?
Oh, okay.
And I think it would be beneficial also because it would create a little bit more distance between the two speed humps that are on the south end of Apple Valley. So that the distance between speed humps would be more like what it is.
I see, yeah, I see.
But I do support the idea of traffic calming. And I also would like to mention that the daily frequent violation of the no-left-turn requirement where it causes tremendous amount of traffic on Sunland and also on Oaklawn. And I hope that we'll get enforcement from the city.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
There are no others.
Okay. Now, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Could you put that back up, please? Two people spoke about the positioning of the speed humps.
Mm-hmm.
They do look like the second one is twice as long from the third one.
Yes.
First one looks pretty close together. And why is it that, was it Mr. Simmons? Mr. Summers, Simmons?
Yeah, the.
Spencer. Why is he not consulted on, why is he not a member, just because he doesn't front?
Well, it's, there are a couple of reasons. One of them is that he, it's only in the way the ordinance is, it's the people that are directly affected, which is usually a driveway on the road. The other reason for the petition is that, as part of this petition, these residents are agreeing to be assessed at $25 a year. Sunland Drive, because of the traffic control, the turn restrictions at Sunland, they're already paying the $25 a year fee because they're already in a traffic calming district. So...
Is this plan set in stone, or can we amend it, or can we say, you know, we need to consider?
The actual speed humps themselves, there's a little bit of flexibility. I mean, they're shown in the approximate locations. I will say, the one on the south that Mr. Spencer asked, that's a little bit, we have a little bit more flexibility in moving that one. The one at the north, the reason there isn't one between Park Ave and Oaklawn is because you need about 20-foot spacing between driveways to be able to put the speed hump is. And the way those lot widths are, and the way the driveways are for both sides of the road, there's not really, we can look again, but there's really not a good location in there where we could put in a speed hump, and it would not affect a driveway on one side of the road or the other.
Okay, so this, these exact locations are not set in stone?
Right.
So, if we approve this, you can still go back to the neighbors and talk to them about where the position?
We will, yeah, we will lay out the actual final ones and the final locations.
In consultation with the people?
Yes.
Okay.
In consultation with the neighbors, yes.
What about adding a fourth one?
On Caldwell?
I mean, because you do want to keep that one when you come from the
Right.
storage place. You want to hit that first on the north side and slow down. But then you also...
We can look at adding a fourth one as well. I mean, again, it's a function of, when I did the initial layout, I looked, it doesn't show on this drawing, but I looked real closely at the driveway spacings and where I could get 20 feet. And there's really, I'll look again, but I don't know that there's a space between Park and Oaklawn where we could add a speed hump just because of the way the driveways are already spaced there.
Who makes that rule of, sorry, who makes that rule of 20 feet?
Well, that's the length of the speed hump, is 20-foot long. And you don't really want to have any part of the speed hump in front of a driveway at all because it makes it difficult for the residents to get in and out.
Also, we had, you know, we had the bike, the bicyclers in the city a couple of weeks ago. And other folks have brought up the width of our speed humps. I guess these will be the first ones we're putting in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Shortening the width of them so that bicyclists can go to the sides of them, like, you know, it's like three feet or something on the side?
We can, and I mean, these will be the first ones we put in as a city. So, I mean, we can look at making them more bike-friendly so that there is room for bicyclists. We do need to be careful not to make it too wide because I have seen it where they, some cities have made them bike-friendly. And what happens is, you'll have car vehicles.
Go around them.
Well, I've seen it, and this happened in Dumwoody, where we made them and made like a three or four-foot gap for bikes. And the cars actually started driving up on the lawns to avoid the speed humps. And we don't want to end up with that.
Make sure we don't have four-foot, I mean, I think three feet is probably...
We'll make sure that we have adequate space for bikes, and we will do that.
And we can put spikes on the curb so that they don't go.
Yeah. So, you know, Richard, that comment you just made really drives home the point that we really need to have a consistent approach in how we're going to be looking at incorporating bike lanes. And that's gonna be coming up at our meeting next week.
Right.
For one, now, I have a question for you.
I have one more on that.
Go for it.
The, will we be able to see the look? Because I prefer speed tables.
They are, the speed humps are a speed table design. Basically, it's a flat top with six-foot, it's a 10-foot wide flat top with six-foot approaches on either side.
They're not gonna be the big yellow blobs?
No, they're not the big yellow blobs. They're similar to what's on Stratfield Drive and throughout the rest of the city.
Okay, I'd like to see if we can even dress them up even more, like you see on Donaldson. Those are the best ones.
Brick tops.
The brick tops, you know, I don't know what the neighbors prefer, but I think that...
We'll look at some different options. The issue with, it gets into cost.
I understand.
So, you know, obviously, if we have to do it with brick pavers on top, it's more costly than doing the asphalt, which is the standard design that we're using.
If we're not putting down 500 speed humps in this, I mean, you know, I don't know, I just, I think aesthetically, I'd like to set a standard in Brookhaven that if you're gonna have speed bumps, they're gonna look better than in other cities and other places. So, I think three or four speed bumps, a little bit extra investment might be good. We'll have to see the cost if it's prohibitive.
Right. I'll look at, I'll get some estimates on the cost. I know what the cost of the asphalt ones are, which is usually about, I think it's about between, about around $3,000 per speed hump for the asphalt ones. So, I'll have to get estimates on doing pavers.
Okay. Pavers across the top. I think they're white on Donaldson. Are they like white concrete or something?
Lighter color.
Lighter color.
Lighter color, yeah.
And so, they also encourage people to walk across them.
Right.
Which is, you know, maybe people know that, they'll slow down.
The ones on Donaldson were specifically, I believe specifically designed as raised crosswalks for pedestrians. And so, that's why they're designed that way specifically.
Okay, well, I just would like to see the designs. And I would like the neighbors to be able to see the designs and plans before we, you know, the placement and the design and what it's gonna look like before we do it, and the options. Thank you.
Three things for you, Richard. Two, actually, for you. One is, when you said speak to neighbors, hopefully you'll speak to Mr. Spencer. Maybe he can give you some type of determination where he thinks the driveway may want to be on that one corner lot so that you can accommodate the best. Because I do understand the kind of problem that can create. Did you ever consider putting a road commer in on Oaklawn?
There, well, there is actually, on Oaklawn right now, there's a turn restriction at Caldwell. As far as the residents of Oaklawn have not requested any speed humps themselves or any other traffic calming other than what's already there. I mean, they basically, between Oaklawn and Sunland, what they've asked for is increased enforcement of the no-left-turn restrictions at Caldwell, which we have been working with the chief and the police department to make sure that that happens. And I know they've issued numerous warnings and numerous citations since we started that about six months ago.
All right, thank you.
That was my third question, so you just answered it. Thanks.
The stories about the speeding and you can't even get out of your driveways are horrendous. You know, this is not the first time we're hearing about speeding. And, you know, we have a tremendous problem in this city of cut-through traffic. You know, we've been at numerous meetings, the chief and Richard and I and other people with other neighborhoods that are experiencing this as well. And I hope that we can really start looking for some smart solutions to the cut-through traffic issue. I'm not sure what it is. I know there's some, there's some communities that are petitioning the city to barricade their streets off. You know, even though it's an inconvenience for them to come in one way or the other way, but no through traffic. I think that's a pretty drastic measure. But, you know, some of them are saying they've got speed humps, and it doesn't really deter the, you know, the heavy cut-through traffic. So, I would hope, and I would ask the city manager, if we can really study this issue, maybe have a little task force on it, and start coming up with some other alternative or some smarter solutions to the cut-through problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing if there's no more public comment. All right?
A move that we approve, Resolution 2014-11-05, a resolution providing for the installation of traffic calming devices on Apple Valley Road.
Would you entertain a friendly amendment? I'm not gonna make the amendment, but I would...
Actually, I'll withdraw if you'd like.
I just would want to, you know...
I'll withdraw my motion.
We've talked about in the past how, I know this is the city doing this, but when we're passing something and we have some things that we've committed to that they get put into the, there's gonna be meetings with the neighbors, we're gonna have designs, we're gonna have, make it feasible for bikes, bike lanes. So, if you could, if y'all could put that in the motion, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 2014-11-05 as amended with the suggestions as itemized by the mayor. Did, Richard, do you have those three suggestions?
I had that meeting with the neighbors to look at the final placement, review the designs, and make them bike-friendly.
The three, the three suggestion changes.
Meet with Mr. Spencer and decide about where the most likely place for that driveway will be.
Well, that would be included in the meeting with the neighbors on final placement.
All right.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance signifies, or the, what is this? A, the motion signifies somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's adopted. Thank you, folks, for coming out. All right, where are we now?
New business.
New business?
Item number one, consideration of approval of agreement between the city of Brookhaven and Trop Inc. and JEG Family Trust. Our city attorney is presenting.
Mayor and council, I have before you, for your consideration, a exit transition agreement between the city and Trop Inc., who is the operator of the Pink Pony, and as well as the JEG Family Trust, which is the owner of the property on which the Pink Pony does business. This agreement has been reviewed by me. This agreement has been reviewed by the attorney for the Pink Pony. The purpose of the agreement is to enable the parties to see-saw litigation that's occurring, to enable a business that prior to the incorporation of the city had operated as the Pink Pony for 20 years in DeKalb County. And to enable the business to transition from the ordinance that has been adopted relating to sexually-oriented businesses, the forcibility of which has been confirmed by our Supreme Court, would therefore enable them the time to amortize their investment and to change their business plan or make plans to do something else with the property in the future. So, what I have before you is an agreement that enables the Pink Pony to continue doing business in the manner in which it's doing, subject to certain changes that we've agreed to with regard to the operation, with regard, and with regard to the facilities associated with where they're doing business within the structure that's there. The agreement itself results in both parties being released for all matters up through today, including all of their employees, including all of the officials and the like. It also agrees that neither party is going to challenge what we're doing here today during the term of the agreement that's there. As I indicated to you earlier, and as well as the Pink Pony's owners are also aware, that while this agreement has a term of six years, this council cannot bind future councils. So, as this proceeds going forward, there's always the issue as to what a future council may do in connection with this. But those matters are addressed in this agreement while, to the extent that if that occurs, then the agreement understands that that may take place. And if that does take place, then basically all gloves are off, and everything starts over again as to what takes place. Now, if I may just spend just a few moments with you going through some of the specifics of the agreement, the first of which relates to Peachtree Creek, which abuts the eastern boundary of the property.
The North Fork of Peachtree Creek?
Yeah, North Fork of Peachtree Creek. The, prior to the incorporation of the city, they had permits from DeKalb County to enable them in order to improve that area, to stop the violations of stream buffers, and to do other work associated with that. That work was never done because the, and what they've agreed to do is to convey the stream buffer area to the city. And associated with that conveyance, there will be a linear park along the green space that will be developed and constructed for pedestrian and bike traffic, as well as installation of benches, a pavilion, and trash receptacles associated with that, as well as four additional parking spaces for the use of those parties who wish to enjoy the green space. Now, in connection therewith, the business is also to agree, has agreed to pay a portion of the surveying costs associated with that, as well as an amount up to $75,000 in order to improve the park improvements. Those numbers have been reviewed by the city manager and believes that budgeting-wise, that should be sufficient in order to construct the improvements that are there. The business will also reimburse legal fees, the legal fees associated with all the matters that the city has incurred in connection with litigation matters involving the Pink Pony, as well as matters relating to the preparation of this agreement. The estimate of that amount has been capped at $283,000. If it's determined that the amount is less than that, then the Pink Pony will be credited with any amounts less than the $283,000. That's to be payable with an upfront payment on the signing of the agreement of $47,000, and then monthly payments thereafter for 20 consecutive months of roughly $11,900 each. This agreement shows that there are going to be improvements made to the Pink Pony property, both internally, which was as a result of the expansion of the club, desired to do in order to expand the dressing rooms, the bathrooms, the manager facilities, the storage facilities, which variance was approved by our ZBA. Also, they're deciding to do additional improvements to the facility internally and externally. In connection with that, the agreement specifies what those improvements are going to be, and how those improvements inside the facility are going to change to ensure that there's additional viewing space within two areas of all the club where there would be adult entertainment taking place with that. The agreement is binding on all successors and assigns associated with this. But I do wish to note to you that the owners of the land, as well as the owners of the operator, cannot convey more than 50% ownership interest in those things without the consent of the city. And/or, if they wish to transfer, then they can transfer to what's known as affiliates, which are principal parties, individuals, which are listed in the agreement, to which they can transfer. So, in connection with that, the city is able to control the transferability of what's taking place in the event that they wish to transfer the business. Again, the term is for six years. During the six-years period of time, the property will be able to continue to operate as an adult entertainment facility, featuring nude entertainment, as well as service of alcohol. Under our current ordinances today, that is not permissible. But the purpose of this is to allow a transition period of time in order for them to amortize their investment, and in order for those employees that are there to feel assured about their jobs today. And with respect to that, then can look to the future and determine what can be done regarding to that. Now, there are certain operational rights that are associated with this, which are obligations concerning the Pink Pony. What is the Pink Pony's receiving is that it has to comply with the city code, everything that's in it, except as may be provided by this agreement. It also provides that any rooms that had been enclosed prior to this time will now be opened up, and that there be no wall facing the inside of the facility more than 54 inches high. Also, there has to be other accoutrements added to the ceiling in order that people can observe what's taking place in those various facilities that are there. Pink Pony must sell food during the period of time and offer it as a restaurant. Keep the percentages as that food is to the alcohol sales that are in accordance with the code. The marquee sign that the Pink Pony has will continue, even though it is a non-conforming use or a non-conforming sign under our ordinance, they'll be able to maintain, operate, and repair that sign during the period of this term. They're also agreeing that they will have no billboards within the city limits of Brookhaven, nor within five miles within the city limits of the city of Brookhaven that are there. There will be no touching of any patrons on any adult entertainers and vice versa. No adult entertainer will be able to touch a patron under this. There's no limitation on the height of any stages, though they currently have stages, as the plan shows, which are part of the agreement, that are 46 inches high. There is no limitation as to what the distance is between a patron and an adult entertainer that's there. Again, they will be able to dance nude, which is in contravention of the ordinance during this period of time. And they will also be able to sell alcohol for this period of time. Now, in additional consideration, the Pink Pony will be paying a, excuse me, a public safety assessment fee each year to the police department in the amount of $225,000 per year, payable quarterly, starting on January 1 of each year, and then April, July, and October. However, the first quarterly payment due January 1, 2015 will be payable on the date of this, of the execution of this agreement. The fee itself is there and payable to the police department, where it'll be segregated for the purpose of paying for the expense associated with the policing, the cost of public safeties, salaries, benefits law, special training, vehicles relating to the enforcement of this business that's there. In the event, the Pink Pony will also be able to maintain its hours of operation similar to that of the alcohol ordinance. Under your current ordinance, SOB ordinance... Under your current ordinance, SOB ordinance, SOB hours, they would have to close at midnight. But now it's tied to the alcohol ordinance. On, in July 15th, that ordinance provides the pouring is done, is finished at 2:55, and it has to close within 30 minutes thereafter. In the event that the city decides to reduce the time, in other words, that you wish to close earlier, or stop pouring earlier, then the agreement provides for a reduction of the fees of $25,000 for every 30 minutes that you close earlier, or require the drinks earlier, or any increment thereof, but however, there would be a floor of $150,000. In the event the city should choose to allow the hours to go into the earlier parts of the morning, and increase the amount of time that the Pink Pony could continue to serve, then there will be a same sort of an adjustment going upwards, that for every 30 minutes or increment thereof, the amount of the fee will increase by $25,000 per year with a ceiling of $400,000. The Pink Pony will also pay all other regular taxes associated with the operating of the business, alcohol license fee, all alcohol taxes, all excise taxes that are otherwise payable. Their employees will be subject to permitting requirements of the city, as well as the permitting fees that are there. And the Pink Pony will also pay the city, at the time of this agreement, all of the fees for 2014 that it otherwise would have paid for 2014, had this agreement been in place that are there. At the end of the term, as I said, everything.
Would you touch on the bad acts portion? I want to make sure.
Okay, I haven't gotten there yet, but I will. During the term, there will be a requirement of the Pink Pony in order to self-police itself. And under that, if they find that there is an adult entertainer or other employee using drugs, or involved in prostitution, or masturbation for hire, or some other sexual act associated with that, or prostitution, then that employee will be dismissed immediately, and notice of that dismissal and the name will be given to the chief of police. For all other violations, the employee will get one strike and be fined $100 by the Pink Pony, and it will be put in their file. At the time of a second strike, then they will be terminated, and the name will be released to the chief of police. To determine whether or not the Pink Pony is complying in this self-reporting, there's going to be a monthly reporting requirement, which will take place on the forms provided by the city. The Pink Pony will also have the opportunity, under this agreement, without search warrant, to come in at any time and review the premises to determine if there are any illegal activities that are taking place. In the event that the city cites, or any code enforcement officer, or any police officer, or any officer that has a post-certification, cites an employee or an adult dancer for a violation, then that true will be processed in accordance with the ordinances that we have. However, if there are certain bad acts that take place, and the bad acts are associated with the managers that would be there, where a manager would be, I don't usually do this much talking in my family, where the managers are participating in, as go-betweens for sex for hire, whether it be a prostitution, acting as, where as acting as a pimp or pandering, also the same as it relates to drugs, then on that citation, if any two of those citations occur within 24 months, any 24-month period of time, and after all direct appeals have been concluded, then the city has the opportunity to terminate this agreement upon that situation. There are also other reasons in which the agreement can be terminated, other than by mutual consent, or the Pink Pony, once it conforms with all of the ordinances that are there. But if the Pink Pony were to voluntarily close for 60 days, it can be terminated. If the Pink Pony, or the property owner were to transfer the property, or more, or controlling interest in the Pink Pony to a third party without the consent of the city, then that can be a notice of termination also. And if it fails to pay when due, the amount of fees, and that payments continue to be unpaid after 30 days' notice, then that too is an event under which this agreement can be terminated with that. Then, the rest of the agreement really relates to the, what I call the normal types of legal provisions that you have into the agreement. I will note that the Pink Pony is also, in connection with its improvements plan, will be improving the parking lot, having parking medians, which will be landscaped in accordance with the ordinance, tree ordinance, and will also, the building will be painted in colors that are earth tones, in colors that are acceptable to both the city and the Pink Pony. And finally, the Pink Pony is agreeing to do some certain buffering with regard to one of its property borders. And I believe I've covered everything here. If you all have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Thank you.
With that, no questions. I'd like to move for the approval of the agreement between the City of Brookhaven and Trop Inc. and JEG Family Trust.
I second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make just a brief statement. You know, last Tuesday, as most of you know, I spoke out against a deal that was being made to allow the strip club, the Pink Pony, to continue to operate. It is in violation of Brookhaven's law that was just unanimously upheld by the Georgia Supreme Court. So as you see, we are now being asked tonight to vote on it. I'm still opposed to it. I still consider it a bad deal for the city. And yes, I consider it sort of a payoff to just look the other way while they violate our law. So you've heard the details of the deal. It's called the transition agreement. And so you might think that that's really just 60 or 90 days, but as you've heard, it's six years. So we've heard that the Pink Pony is going to make, I think, a million-dollar-plus investment in their club, and that they need this time to amortize its investment. I'm personally skeptical that the club will come into compliance after six years, but I really hope they're going to be good to their word. What does the city get for the deal? Well, you've heard the numbers. We're going to get $225,000 a year. I actually find that a pretty interesting amount. You know, you may know that Michael Gallardi, the son of the Gallardi family who owns the Pink Pony, went to federal prison a few years ago for offering bribes of about $200,000 to city council members in Las Vegas and San Diego to vote against an ordinance similar to ours. In this transition agreement, the Pink Pony promises no touching or fondling, and has agreed that the club will self-report that. Once again, I'm a little skeptical, but I really am hoping that the Pink Pony will be, you know, will be good to their word, and keep its commitment, you know, on that. The money is supposed to go to help police and enforce the agreement. I welcome that. We know that we've got a lot of crime and problems down on Beaufort Highway, and I'm sure the police can use the extra support. I personally stayed out of the meetings negotiating this deal. I did make a few suggestions that got in. The Pink Pony agrees that before the end of the six-year term, if it's not in compliance and is closing, that it will provide some job placement services to its employees. I think they're, you know, I wanted to at least look out for something for the employees. I think they're being put in a bad situation, too. The staff is also going to be trained annually on the subject of sex trafficking, and that's because the GBI tells us that the strip clubs are the number-one place where sex trafficking takes place, so I welcome that idea. I'm still disappointed that we even got to this point. I think we passed a strong ordinance to limit the proliferation of adult clubs and stores. We successfully defended it in court. The Georgia Supreme Court unanimously upheld it, and with the court agreeing that the combination of alcohol and nudity leads to lewd and lascivious behavior, as well as other negative effects in the community. On Monday, the Supreme Court dismissed the Pink Pony's last-ditch effort at a motion for reconsideration. I still think we should be demanding that the Pink Pony come into compliance with the law. I personally hope the Pink Pony will use this as an opportunity to upgrade its club, and really improve the working conditions for its people, and really become something that we can be proud of. I do want to thank all of the people who have expressed their support to me and my position. The outpouring of calls and emails has been gratifying. I personally don't intend to dwell on this subject anymore. I'm as sick of the Pink Pony as you all are. It has been a distraction, and I plan to continue to focus my time on my priorities of, I think we all share, of a strong police force, of getting our roads paved, improving our parks, building trails and sidewalks, finding solutions to our traffic, and thoughtful zoning, and building the kind of model city that we all dream of. I may have disagreed with my colleagues, but please don't misunderstand that it's in any way personal. I truly like and respect them, and I look forward to all of us continuing to work on the common goals that we share. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I wish, Rebecca, that you had the same regard for the taxpayers' money in relating to the legal fees that we've already spent in defending our ordinance. We've been able to negotiate the recouping of those monies to the citizens of Brookhaven. I'm glad and thankful for, that the ownership of the Pink Pony sat down with us and negotiated what I believe is a fair and strong ordinance to allow transition for our city to operate with a business that's been in Brookhaven for over 20 years, and end all litigation on this matter. So, you know, this was an issue that really was unfortunate for the city. Because when we started as a city, I don't believe that any of us ever had anticipation that this lawsuit was going to occur. We did have to have a constitutionally upholding sexually-oriented business ordinance, which protected the city against future entrance, but it didn't find a solution for the one SOB business that we did have in the city of Brookhaven. So, after a long, tedious battle, I hope that this, tonight signifies a step forward in moving to work together to address the issues that our SOB ordinance points out, and hopefully, we have, we never have to discuss this issue again up here. Thanks.
Please.
Please.
I'm going to reiterate positions I'm on record for, and when we first got into this, it was never about the Pink Pony. And I know some of you people, some find that hard to believe. Our objective was to facilitate a correction of the DeKalb County ordinance, and secure a constitutionally sound ordinance for the city of Brookhaven. This was our constitutional responsibility, and we did that. And we did that with resounding success, with approval from the Supreme Court, based upon challenges that we obviously got from the Pink Pony in the lawsuit. So for the last two years, there's been some very passionate positions put out on this, and it's come from both sides, to be quite honest with you. But as a businessman, I think there's a certain amount of respect that needs to be paid to existing businesses that are in Brookhaven, regardless of what you think about that business. They have to be treated respectfully. And I think this is an opportunity for us to bring resolution to the issue and move forward. I mean, this has been dominating a lot of the conversation, and we really are so much more of a city than this issue. We're doing so many great things. I think this is another step forward in what we can be doing to make sure there's a city that we're being very, very positive in how we approach the situation from all sides, and I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you, Joe, Rebecca, and Bates. I'll try to be brief if I can. Can y'all hear me okay? All right. Just a couple things. The most important thing about this transition agreement, to me, and I've been consistent from the beginning when I was first sworn in, and folks, none of us ran on this issue. It was a surprise to us when the first day we were practicing as a city council, this issue was the first issue that was brought up to us by our attorneys. And it shocked every one of us. I think we can all agree that it shocked every one of us. So, please understand, this is not something we set out to do. We were ready to start with parks and paving, and the first thing we got was the other P., which was the Pink Pony. And we worked very hard, and asked a lot of questions, and argued amongst ourselves, argued with our attorneys, about why are we having to deal with this issue? This is not something that any of us ever thought would come up. And after days and days of going back and forth as to why we needed to do what we do, we all decided unanimously, and that goes for Councilman Iyer, who was here at the time, that it was important that we had a constitutional ordinance that was, could be upheld by the Constitution, that prevented the future proliferation of strip clubs in the city of Brookhaven. Now, there are those who say, oh, that was never, that got to be an option. They existed for 20 years, and there was no new strip clubs opened. Well, what we were faced with was the fact that we were a new city, and a line of other new cities that had incorporated over the previous five years. And that changed the landscape for strip club industry and sexually-oriented businesses in the metro area. So, we had a different landscape, and people thought we were being irrational about this. And we couldn't talk about it because we were involved in litigation, and that's another thing. When we were going through the adoption of the ordinance, we couldn't really talk about anything other than what dealt with the ordinance. But the reason I had from the beginning for voting for this ordinance, or supporting this ordinance, was because I thought it was important that we had a rock-solid ordinance that stopped more strip clubs from opening in Brookhaven, because of the landscape that had changed with the new cities, all being in litigation with the strip club and the sexually-oriented business industry. Sandy Springs, Roswell, Johns Creek, Milton, Doraville, all these cities were in litigation with the sexually-oriented business industry. That wasn't the case 20 years ago. It's the case recently. So, if we didn't have an ordinance, we would, the floodgates would have been open to the city of Brookhaven, to turn Beaufort Highway into Cheshire Bridge Road. And regardless of what you think about the Pink Pony, I don't think there are many citizens who would agree that we should have let the floodgates open to other businesses that maybe aren't as, run the same way that the Pink Pony's run. And that, you know, the Pink Pony, you can't really see it from Beaufort Highway, but it was our duty to protect the values of our homeowners' properties, to improve the city of Brookhaven on Beaufort Highway, and that's what we're still going to do. And that's why we adopted this ordinance in the beginning, was to protect Brookhaven and improve Brookhaven, not to go after the Pink Pony. And I said it several times. If we can find a way to keep out new strip clubs and allow the Pink Pony to operate under certain guidelines, we should do it. I haven't changed my position from the beginning to now, because that's what this agreement does. This agreement lets us keep our ordinance, which keeps new clubs out of the city of Brookhaven. And that's important to me, and I think it's important to the citizens of Brookhaven as well. This was a hard issue for us, because we couldn't talk, and it's not something you can explain to someone in five minutes. You can't do a blurb about equal protection, about nude dancing being free speech, about negative secondary effects. It's completely complex, and it's, we have heard from some folks that we're not listening to the citizens. We listened to every word our citizens said, through emails, phone calls, people at the podium, we listened. And I think this is evidence that we listened, but we had to wait till the penalty, the litigation was over, to make sure that our ordinance was upheld, because we all believed in that ordinance, and I think we all still do, and it was, unanimously upheld by the Supreme Court. So we're happy that we have our ordinance, and the integrity of our ordinance is intact, and this ordinance doesn't change one iota because of this transition agreement. We're demanding compliance with our ordinance in this agreement. The other issue is the litigation that distracted the citizens, and often distracted us, from the job of running this city and doing the things that we wanted to do, like the parks, paving, and police. There are three other cases pending against the city of Brookhaven in various forms by the Pink Pony. It's not just that the Supreme Court ruled unanimously that our ordinance is constitutional. That's just one issue. Because the Supreme Court cited in their ruling that the alcohol license issue was not settled, and there was no standing on the part of the Pink Pony, if we moved to shut them down next week, another lawsuit's filed on the same, go through the same two years. So, settlement is a compromise. So, settlement is a compromise to get the best for your position and I think that's what we've done. I know the Pink Pony's not happy about everything in this agreement. I know that we're not happy about everything in this agreement. I know that there's no renewal term and when you talk about, you know, the term bribe and payoff has been mentioned, the payoff was just mentioned just a second ago, I take offense to that because the agreement that DeKalb County had with the Pink Pony was renewable. And if it had kept in place, it'd be for 25 years with another renewal option. And they took money into their general fund, not to their police department, which is what we're doing. They took money into their general fund, spent it, didn't spend it on police. We know that. That's one of the reasons we became a city because of lack of police protection. That would have gotten us maybe two more officers that money if they'd spent it on what they should have spent it on. But they took money, yeah, they took money and I think they took money to look the other way and not deal with it. Well, we've done the hard work of dealing with this issue. We've addressed issues with the Pink Pony. I do think they're sincere. I know that there are people there who have bartender jobs and they're managers and cooks and busboys and people that have jobs and to Joe's point, we have a responsibility to treat our business community, no matter what kind of business it is, with respect. You know, strip clubs aren't a big part of my life, never have been, but they are for some people and as long as we can have an ordinance that doesn't allow any of them, more of them to come in and we get to keep it and they pay for, during the penancy of this term for security and policing in and around their facility, then I think that's a good deal for our city because it deals with some of the issues that were brought up by our ordinance. And we're not looking the other way. We're looking right at them and the chief Yender is going to be looking right at the Pink Pony if they know it and they expect it and they've accepted that. They're going to run a tight ship according to this agreement. There are checks in this agreement that with licensing, with background checks, with bad acts, potential bad acts done by the, potentially done by any management at the Pink Pony, we're not saying those things are going to happen, but we had to have in our minds the comfort that if the Pink Pony's going to operate during this, the penancy of this agreement, they've agreed to certain things and we've agreed to watch, trust but verify. And that's what we're doing with this agreement. We're not looking the other way. I know the chief's not going to be looking the other way. I'm not looking the other way and I know you won't be looking the other way. I know Bates and Joe won't, probably for a different reason. You probably want to be looking right, what's going on there? Just messing with you. So, you know, another thing that the funds they're paying for security are going into a separate account. They're not going, we can't touch that money. It's going to the police department for special training and for enforcement of this agreement. And again, there's an end date. So, there's other pending litigations out there. There's other potential litigation that we're trying to stop because I think our citizens expect it. People who are, wants to shut them, want to shut them down tomorrow and people who want to let them stay open forever, I think are happy, will be happy to know that the litigation ends here. I know the Pink Pony and Trop Inc. is glad about that. I'm glad about that. I can't wait tomorrow to get back to focusing entirely on playgrounds that are parks, on paving another six miles of roads. Sidewalks are a big thing to me, more sidewalks. This linear green space that we're going to be taking over from the Pink Pony, it's the first step in our North Fork of Peachtree Creek plan and our comprehensive plans and our traffic plans and our parks plans and our Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan are, we're going to be focusing on those things for our citizens and our taxpayers. So, thank you to the work that Tom and your staff has done. Thank you to Marie for all the work that you did on this, really, really. And thank you to all the council here and thank you to you Rebecca because I agree with you on most things and I agree with you on this and we're partners on this, on this to a certain extent. I have a different take on what we've done here than you do, but I, I know that you've stated you want this behind you and I think that's, that's great and I think we all are going to be happy about that. So, folks, I feel a little bit liberated now that I can speak my mind about this. We were handcuffed and muzzled for almost two years and I look forward to talking to reporters, talking to citizens, going to door to door and seeing folks and seeing what they think, but, and I just am happy that we were able to get this done and I appreciate your patience. So, thank you. All right. All in favor of adopting the proposed settlement transition agreement? Please signify so by saying aye.
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 Yeah, there was a second, but Mayor, you don't need to vote until you listen to who's opposed to it.
He's a mind reader.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All, okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I'll vote aye. The agreement passes. Thank you. All right. Where are we now? We're almost done.
Item number two for new business, ordinance 1553, ordinance for the adoption of Chapter 11 Emergency Management in its entirety. We did discuss this in our-
Folks, if you could, if you could-
Let me take a little break here.
We want to take a, we'll take a five minute recess. Five minute recess.
We have recess now?
Okay.
We're at item number two on new business. Ordinance 1553, ordinance for the adoption of Chapter 11 Emergency Management is in its entirety.
Okay.
We will have public comment on this ordinance. We discussed it in the work session. If the council has any specific questions, we have the attorneys here or you can open it up for public comment.
I'd like to open it up for public comment.
There are none.
Okay. All right.
Need a motion?
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 2014-11-01, ordinance for the adoption of Chapter 11 Emergency Management in its entirety.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right.
Item number three is ordinance 15-
Close that public comment, by the way.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Item number three, ordinance 1554, ordinance for the adoption of Chapter 5 Animals in Its Entirety. We discussed this at our work session. If council has any questions, our attorneys are here to answer them. Otherwise, you can open it up for public comment.
Is there any public comment on the animal ordinance?
There are none.
Okay. Close the public comment.
Mayor, if we, there was that one typo.
Okay.
In 5.3.
Of the device? Okay, thank you. Do we need to make that amendment when we do the motion? Okay. If someone could make a motion to, in 5.3, to change the word devise to device or devices?
Article 5.3.
It's under 5.3.
5.3 B.3.
5.3 B.3.
Devise to device?
Device, correct.
I'll check.
All right. Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come up as wrong because devise is-
No, no, exactly. That's what I mean.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance 10, 2014-11-02 with the change that Article 5.3 changed devise to device.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just if I may please, for clarification, we are referring to ID number 1554.
Okay.
It's on the agenda. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay.
I heard a different number sounded.
I don't see 1554 on here.
On the agenda?
No, I see-
Okay, on my agenda. It's here, might be part of the minute track, but-
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Maybe you want to state, maybe you want to state the ordinance?
The ordinance is, yeah, just Chapter 5.
You want me to restate my motion, maybe?
No, I'll just, just-
This is the ordinance for the adoption of Chapter 5 Animals in Its Entirety. This is all about protecting animals and punishing neglect and abuse of animals and making sure we don't have unruly dogs and cats.
So, this motion was seconded, correct? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Confirmation of Construction Board of Appeals appointments. All right, we have a Construction Board of Appeals that we're appointing and we have, the names are Brad Hughes, Sarah Kennedy, Rick Glisten and Jim Delaney. I know that Jim Delaney's here. Is anybody else that I named here? All right? So, we can, we can approve those four. They don't have to be here, all right? So, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment to the Construction Board for the city of Brookhaven.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I just want to say thank you for anybody that volunteers for any board in Brookhaven. It's a lot, it's a lot of work and it's, you know, we have a very smart and on top of it citizenry and they don't let anything get by them, so I don't know how often you'll meet, but I appreciate your willingness to serve. It really, and I would just ask that people, as I always do, when we have people that volunteer to serve on our boards, please treat them with respect in your communications and in your discussions about them because they are here to volunteer and you're not. So, make sure that we treat them with respect that they deserve.
I'd like to make comment. I was really anxious to make sure we pushed this forward because one thing that we do pride ourselves on is trying to have as much input as we can and when we're talking about issues, we argue, we get a lot of response from residents, but it's important we get comments from professionals too, so we understand how it affects their side of the business and we get a perspective from them that we may, maybe, we sometimes may not have. So, I'm really happy that we've, we've concluded this and I'm looking forward to taking advantage of this board down the road.
And I just want to clarify, it's my understanding this is the Construction Board of Appeals that would hear cases if, if a builder or developer wants to appeal a-
Code interpretation.
Code interpretation or a building code issue. So, again, we want to make sure we've got a good judicial process or a hearing process in effect to give people a full and fair hearing.
Okay, is, did we already have a motion on this?
Yes.
This is discussion.
Rebecca and Bates.
All right. All in favor of adopting the, of confirming the individuals stated, signify so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right.
Should we have them come up?
Yeah, have them come up. Stand up and come up because I'm going to swear you in real quick. Hold that and read along as I tell you. All right. There you go. Ms. Kennedy's here. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't, all right. If you please raise your right hand. On my honor, aye, state your name. If you repeat after me, on my honor, aye, state your name.
On my honor, aye, Jim Delaney.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of the Construction Board of Appeals of the city of Brookhaven.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully-
And will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia and the Charter, ordinances and regulations of the city of Brookhaven.
Will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution. Charter, ordinances-
I'm not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I'm not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this-
I'm not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I-
By the laws of the state of Georgia. And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the-
I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the city of Brookhaven to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward or expectation thereof.
Perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the city. Of fear, favor, or expectation thereof.
Congratulations. You're going to come down and get a picture with them. Now, you have a forum. Now, you're in forum. So, anytime you're, we're going to get you some training on that. You'll get used to it.
Congratulations.
Can their first job be tonight is called?
Yes. That's all in there? All right. We'll give you some, we'll give you, we'll give you a better copy. Yes? Okay. Oh, great. Yes. Um, what is the fourth? Yes. Just want to make a note on the, on the chart, I want a charter change, Marie and Tom.
Excuse me.
Our oath, we need to cut it in half.
Court net, right.
Yes, I've asked about that.
I've asked about that before.
Our oath is entirely too long and confusing. Sorry. Are you sure you're not the holder of any unaccounted for public money or trust position thereof? Yeah.
Who writes these things?
Okay.
Probably lawyers.
Yeah, all right.
Next item is other business. We have none.
Public comments. All right, and it's the public comment section. If you'd like to come up, this is the-
Aubrey Valance.
Okay.
Aubrey Valance. I want to thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of our employees, our staff and the Pink Pony, our patrons and probably most of all, the citizens of Brookhaven who overwhelmingly supported us and we appreciate that support. I'm not going to dwell or comment on anything that I deem inflammatory or inaccurate tonight. It's not the time to do it. It just is not. I read recently that you forgive people not because they deserve it, but because you deserve it and you deserve peace. We want to move on. We want to move on. There's been no simple solutions here, only intelligent choices. And I think you've made an intelligent choice to compromise and like all compromises, we're not totally happy with. There are things in that agreement that we wish were not in there. There were things that are not in that agreement that we wish were there, but I think the agreement, the compromise will serve well for the citizens of Brookhaven, which is what you're here to serve and I appreciate you doing that. I want to thank you, every one of you. I know this has been difficult for you. I know it's been stressful. I know it's pulled at you. I mean, I've known many of you for years and your families for years and I couldn't even talk to you about this. That's tough. When I started this, my hair was a lot thicker and was darker. And even Tom's was darker. But again, I'm not being trite when I say it. I appreciate the hard work that went into this. We want to continue to be the good neighbor we've been for 22 years. We want to continue to be supported by the community as we've been supported. We want to continue to work with you on all things of mutual concern and I think we will. Again, I appreciate all your hard work and Tom and Emily. I know we spent a lot of time together and spent a lot of time with all of you. Thanks again and don't be a stranger. Come see us.
Thank you. Next?
No others.
No other comments? All right. Okay. Sure. Okay.
Kim Gerch again with the Kroskis Foundation. I apologize and I know everyone's probably had a long evening and ready to call it a night, but I was remiss. Earlier, we were talking about the serving of the young people, of less fortunate families in our community, using the vehicle from Comcast. So, I did, for the, I made a big assumption that people understand what the population we're talking about, so I wanted to quickly share a couple of facts with the community that I know you folks know. Woodward Elementary is, well, let's start with DeKalb County. DeKalb County is a very poor population in general, measured by public education enrollment. In that environment, Woodward Elementary is the quote poorest elementary school in DeKalb County with a free and reduced lunch rate and Title I rate of 99.6%. That's 1,100 young people, virtually every one of them from a household where their best meal is their breakfast or lunch at the elementary school during the school year. So, this is really an important fact for everyone to understand. On-
Um, what is the fourth? Just want to make a note on the, on the chart. I want a charter change, Marie and Tom.
Excuse me.
Our oath, we need to cut it in half.
Courtney F. Wright.
Yes, I've asked about that. So, we need to, our oath is entirely too long and confusing. Sorry. Are you sure you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money or trust or position thereof? Yeah.
Who writes these things?
Okay.
Probably lawyers.
Yeah, all right.
Next item is other business. We have none.
Public comments. All right, and it's the public comment section, if you'd like to come up. This is the-
Aubrey Valines.
Okay.
Aubrey Valines. I want to thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of our employees, our staff, and the Pink Pony, our patrons, and probably most of all, the citizens of Brookhaven, who overwhelmingly supported us, and we appreciate that support. I'm not going to dwell or comment on anything that I deem inflammatory or inaccurate tonight. It's not the time to do it. It just is not. I read recently that you forgive people not because they deserve it, but because you deserve it, and you deserve peace. We want to move on. We want to move on. There's been no simple solutions here, only intelligent choices. And I think you've made an intelligent choice, to compromise. And like all compromises, we're not totally happy with, there are things in that agreement that we wish were not in there. There were things that are not in that agreement that we wish were there. But I think the agreement, the compromise, will serve well for the citizens of Brookhaven, which is what you're here to serve, and I appreciate you doing that. I want to thank you, every one of you. I know this has been difficult for you. I know it's been stressful. I know it's pulled at you. I mean, I've known many of you for years, and your families for years, and I couldn't even talk to you about this. That's tough. When I started this, my hair was a lot thicker and was darker. And even Tom's was darker. But again, I'm not being trite when I say it. I appreciate the hard work that went into this. We want to continue to be the good neighbor we've been for 22 years. We want to continue to be supported by the community as we've been supported. We want to continue to work with you on all things of mutual concern, and I think we will. Again, I appreciate all your hard work, and Tom and Emily, I know we've spent a lot of time together, and spent a lot of time with all of you. Thanks again, and don't be a stranger. Come see us.
Thank you. Next?
No others.
No other comments? All right. Okay. Sure, okay.
Kim Gerch again with the Cross Keys Foundation. I apologize. I know everyone's probably had a long evening and ready to call it a night, but I was remiss. Earlier, we were talking about the serving of the young people, of less fortunate families in our community, using the vehicle from Comcast. So, I did, I made a big assumption, that people understand what the population we're talking about, so I wanted to quickly share a couple of facts with the community that I know you folks know. Woodward Elementary is, well, let's start with DeKalb County. DeKalb County is a very poor population in general, measured by public education enrollment. In that environment, Woodward Elementary is the, quote, poorest elementary school in DeKalb County, with a free and reduced lunch rate and Title I rate of 99.6%. That's 1,100 young people, virtually every one of them from a household, where their best meal is their breakfast or lunch at the elementary school during the school year. So, this is really an important fact for everyone to understand. On the high school level, that 99.6% drops to 86.5%. A little bit of comfort there with the feeding area, attendance area, that stretches a little bit wider. I wanted to make sure that everyone heard that, to understand the potential value for some of these households, to simply have connectedness. We've got a lot of things in Brookhaven that we could either look at as a division, a way to divide, or we can look at the opportunities to connect. This is one way to help the community connect physically, but I think it's very allegorical for the things that a lot of the citizenry would like to see, a one-Brookhaven view of things. Those that have been around a long time know that that's not necessarily our heritage. Lynwood Park certainly was not part of Brookhaven, a very isolated enclave for a long, long time, as an all, virtually all Negro community, with an all Negro school. So, we have a heritage, we can't deny it, but we have a future, and we have choices to make. So, I want to commend again the City Council, the Mayor, and the City Manager for making sure that this program comes to life, gets supported for those elements in our community that don't have the things that we do. So, again, thank you for that. And on a matter of quality, I've shared with you guys privately, but I want to share publicly, the state of Georgia ranks the career and college readiness of every school in the state of Georgia. Of all the schools in our community in North Atlanta, I can name eight of them in order, and it would challenge anyone to guess where Cross Keys fall, falls. Dunwoody is number one. Campbell Lee is number two. Cross Keys is number three. Behind Cross Keys in college and career readiness is Riverside Char-, I'm sorry, Riverwood Charter, North Atlanta Charter, Druid Hills, and Lakeside High Schools. So, not only are these deserving children, they're hardworking and high-achieving children. So, Marie, City Manager, thank you again for the opportunity to represent them, and we'll make this hap-, we're going to make this happen, and we're going to get the computers out of the way. Let them be connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right.
I would just point out, for those of you who don't know, the schools he's talking about are right there on Curtis Drive, really a stone's throw from you all. It's, if you're not aware of this school and what's going on there.
I just want to make one comment on that too.
Computers are only $150.
$149.
You know, Kim started his comment earlier tonight by saying, you know, the image of Brookhaven is one of, what, wealth and prosperity? Did you know that we have the highest poverty rate in Brookhaven, right along Beaufort Highway? I mean, you know, there's such dichotomy that goes on in our, in our city.
That was pointed out during the Cityhood debate, I think.
Right. And because of that, we took the opportunity to create what's called an opportunity zone that we've put in for along that area, which is hopefully going to really help provide employment for a lot of people in that area. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things going on, and now we have more time to spend on it, so it's really good. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.